Good afternoon, good evening everyone. My name is Mayor Beverly H. Burks and this is the special call city council meeting for Tuesday, October 29th at 6:00 P. M. At this time, I will do roll call. Vice Mayor Johnson is online. Councilwoman Hood?
Present.
And thank you. Councilwoman Hood? Councilwoman Hood?
Oh, I said present.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Carol?
Present.
And Councilman Perkins?
Present.
And Councilwoman Bell is not here yet. We'll move on. Are there any changes? Since this is a special call, we will not have any changes to the agenda. We'll move to the new business, starting with 3A, which is to present the proposed fiscal year 2025 operating and enterprise fund budget. And I'll turn this over to our city manager and Ms. Lolita, our new finance director.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to each of you. As the mayor mentioned, we are here to present our proposed fiscal year 25 budget. Can you believe it's that time of the year again? I would be presenting the budget along with our finance director Lolita Grant. This is the first of two public hearings. Today's date is October 29th and then we will have the second public hearing on November the 7th. And that is the date that we are hoping that it will be adopted as well. Next slide. Oh, you got the right slide. Thank you. The purpose, just to give some background, the purpose of the city manager's proposed budget, the budget is one of the most important policy decisions that the city council makes annually. And is considered an adoption of the operating budget. The council makes that, takes that action. The budget represents the vision of the city council and reflects the needs of the community. The city's fiscal year budget is from January 1st through December the 31st. And the budget provides a 12-month roadmap for the staff to follow. Next slide. I just wanted to take this opportunity to remind the public about the vision and mission of the city of Clarkston. We talked about the vision statement and mission statement during the retreat back in March of this year. And the vision for the city, as a multicultural and diverse community, we aspire to be inclusive and responsive, striving for excellence in everything we do. The mission statement, it is the mission of the city of Clarkston to provide all citizens with cost-effective services. And leadership that is open and responsive to the needs of the community, as well as to work for the benefit of all. While developing and ensuring the highest quality of life for our residents. And our city's vision and mission statement is focused on some specific key areas. They are staff development, public safety, economic development, infrastructure, and efficient and effective services. Next slide. Moving forward together is our theme for the 2025 budget year. This year's theme was moving forward, but we want to go a step further and, and use the 25 theme as moving forward together. And I did want to just reflect on the past and where we're trying to go. This year, our city will celebrate 142 years. The city of Clarkston was incorporated December 12th, 1882. And, you know, we have overcome some challenges like many cities. And we have many opportunities ahead of us. So we have some opportunities as we look toward the future for our city. The windshield is large and provides great vision. So we're going to be focusing on our, our future. And we just talked about our vision statement. The rearview mirror is small but provides important perspectives. So we don't want to forget about those things from the past, but we also want to learn and enhance some of the things that we've experienced in the past. So with that said, my goal is to present a budget that's focused on moving forward for fiscal year 2025. Next slide. So how did we get here? The journey to the city manager's proposed balanced budget. We did some budget kickoff meetings. During that time, we had meetings with our staff. They were instructed to review the operational needs of their departments for efficient and effective operations. We held staff meetings to assess office space and technology needs. As the interim city manager along with our finance director, we held two meetings with the city council. To review the details of the fiscal year 25 budget to include our community action budget, our CIP, as well as our American Rescue Plan budget. We also held meetings with our contracted city engineer to talk about the capital improvement project, CIP fleet. And also, we discussed some technology needs for the years 2025 through 2030. Some new incentives in the budget process require staff to review citywide fees, which we will talk about our proposed fee schedule on this evening. And we also included some recommendations for changes. The, next slide. The proposed fiscal year 25 budget plan, you will see in this budget that it includes a 3% cost of living adjustment for all eligible city employees. That would be effective if approved July 1st of 2025. We are also including some one new staff person part-time, uh, full-time, pardon me, the addition of a city engineer and also two summer interns. We're looking at some upgrades to our city parks. I did want to also mention here that we are recommending that two of our public works laborers be transferred to the parks department to help with parks maintenance issues and other services. We're looking at doing some upgrades to roads and sidewalks, purchasing police cars and equipment, and then upgrades to technology. Some other new key incentives in regards to moving our city forward together includes public infrastructure enhancements. As I mentioned, police cars and equipment, future city facilities. As we move over to our new building, hopefully before the end of this year, we need to make decisions on what we need to do regarding this building. Are we going to tear it down? Are we going to renovate it? Are we going to rebuild here? And then we're also looking at grant allocations for our community action budget. We wanted to look at creating a grant program where nonprofit organizations who service our residents here in the city of Clarkston, they would apply to the city. The finance department, as well as the city manager's office would evaluate those applications and come up with recommendations for funding. So at this time, I'm going to turn the next several slides over to the finance director Lolita Grant.
Thank you. Can you hear, is on? Okay. Thank you. The citywide expenditures for FY 2025 is 15,351,391 dollars. The general fund represents 66% of the overall budget. Okay, and you will see the, the general fund as well as the SPOLOX II and the ARP fund that represent over 79% of our budget. Next slide, please. The general fund, as I mentioned, is 10, is 60, is 63% of our budget. The total, 66% of our budget. The total expenses for the general fund is 10,181,109 dollars. Administration represent 24.36% of our budget. Police represent 31% of the budget. And then we have public works in the, which represent 12.95% of the budget. Overall, the budget has increased by 941,044 dollars. The reason for this increase is the addition of new staff. We filled some positions. There was the COLA that increased our costs, as well as an increase in benefits and insurance. Also included, that contributed to the overall increase is the cost for the new city hall and technology upgrades. The CIP, if you notice, is a decrease from 2024. That's because the SPOLOX is going to fund most of our projects, our CIP projects. So that's the reason for that decrease. The next page. Other funds. If you look at the other funds, we're looking at grants. Wanted to focus on that because there is a decrease in grants. Grants decreased by 370,000 dollars. The reason for that decrease is that many of the grants has expired. We have completed, we're working on completing the terms of those grants and we are applying for new grants. So those grants have expired. And that includes, those grants includes the ARP grant, as well as DOT grants and several others that we have. Next slide. Revenues. Many people have the misconception that the budget is based on expenditures. The budget is based on revenues. So our budget is for citywide is 15,356,676 dollars. The general fund makes up 10,185,511 dollars of the budget. Revenues exceed expenditures by 4,402 dollars. This is considered a balanced budget. The general funds are generally unrestricted for operations. That's what the general fund is used for. As I stated before, overall, the general fund along with property taxes, which includes your property taxes. And it includes your insurance premium. Those two revenue sources make up 79% of the general fund budget. Okay, other, other sources of revenue. These, next slide, I'm sorry. Most of these funds are restricted. They could be used for certain expenses. This include your federal seizure grant, which basically is used for police. We have other grant funds for DOT and other parks and recreations. Those funds are restricted for those, those processes, those projects, I'm sorry. The SPOLOX fund, again, that fund was approved, the taxes, and we're looking at a slightly decrease in that from what we had last year in 2024. But we expect that to change because it's seasonal. So we expect to see revenue increase over a period of time. Okay, our stormwater fund is going to be about the same. It's, right now, it's operating in the black. It's not in the red. The same with sanitation, but we won't know for sure with the sanitation, I'm sorry, the stormwater and sanitation funds, because those fees are charged with, with our property taxes. So when you're looking for those revenues, you'll see an increase in those. Any questions?
Yes. Did you say you are taking questions now, or do you want me to wait till you finish?
We're going to take them at the end, please.
Okay.
Yep. Before I continue with slide number 14, I did want to just clarify, I think I said city engineer. When I, when I was at slide number six, that should be the addition of a planner in the planning and economic development department. So I wanted to make sure that that's clear. Okay, next slide. As Ms. Grant mentioned, the SPOLOX II, the referendum was approved in November of 2023. The city of Clarkston is expected to receive 17,245,978 dollars over the next five years. We did start our collections of this spring, the city manager's office. We will propose some budget amendments as we continue to come up with some finite project plans for the SPOLOX II categories. The council approved the categories, but we haven't specifically approved the projects in those categories. SPOLOX II collections to date are 1,689,337 dollars. Next slide. This is a slide that I just wanted to put in, just to remind the public of the specific categories for our SPOLOX II allocations. Road, street, bridges, purposes, including sidewalk and bicycle, bicycle paths. That makes up 60% of the SPOLOX budget. Cultural facilities, recreational facilities, or historic facilities makes up 20% of the budget. A courthouse, administrative building, or civic center makes up 13% of the budget. Public safety facilities, airport facilities, and/or related capital equipment makes up 7% of the budget. For a grand total estimated at 100%. And again, that estimated allocation for SPOLOX is going to be 17,245,978. Next slide. I mentioned new personnel. And I'm not sure why that presentation is looking that way. You should be on. Yes, thank you. New personnel recommendations. We are currently in the process of kicking off our class in comp study. We did an RFP. And the consultant, that process is going to begin this week. Dr. Baker is shaking his head. It was, came back at about 21,000 dollars. So it was within my spending authority. And because we are starting at the end of, you know, this fiscal year, going into the new fiscal year. We will owe about 8,000 dollars going into next year. So we wanted to make sure that that was reflected. Also, key new staff, as I mentioned earlier, we have one full-time planner in the planning department. As the council is aware, we are, you know, having some challenges in regards to the amount of work compared to the number of employees in that department. So we are recommending the addition of one staff person. And we're looking at two summer interns. And I did want to make note that the number that you see there includes the salary and benefits for the part-time planner position. And only the salaries for the two summer interns. So that makes up the 109,352. Next slide. Our new administrative office building, 736 Park North. We, in, next slide, in anticipation of any unforeseen building or maintenance expenses. We did want to allocate about 50,000 dollars. As the council is aware, we are trying to address the insurance issues, which are the reason why we have not gotten into that building yet and how, and why our construction has not started. So we hope to have that addressed at seven o'clock during the work session agenda, when you'll get a chance to hear some explanations about that. But we are hoping that many of the expenses, initial expenses that we need to move into 736 will come out of this current fiscal year budget. However, I do want the council to be aware that if for some reason we are not in that building by December 31st. We may be coming back to you with some recommendations on some things that we need to add into the fiscal year 25 budget. But you won't see a whole lot, but you, we do have the annual lease payments. Of course, those will begin upon possession of the building. In our, I guess, haste, we did start paying on the lease, but we were advised that we did not have to pay that. So we do have about 138,000 dollar credit that we will receive from the building owner. And of course, regarding information technology, we're allocating about 135,000 dollars for that purpose. So that is a total amount of 575, 500, 575,000. Other key programs and incentives I wanted to highlight. We did not get a chance to proceed with digitizing many of the paper files that we have in our office. So we did want to continue to have funding so that we can do that. We do have a lot of things that we need to digitize. And, and moving into our new building would be a great time to get that done. The annexation study, this was something that we discussed during our retreat. So we do have some money allocated. And these were based upon just staff, us getting together and just trying to figure out what these costs are. So we may have to come back to you if they are above what our estimates are, but based upon just asking around, these are the estimates that we have. I am recommending that the city do a strategic plan. You know, we have a comprehensive plan, but we don't have a strategic plan. And I think that's really necessary with our growing city, that we look at strategic planning initiatives for the next five years, three to five years, which is typically what the strategic plans go through. As I mentioned earlier, the community action budget, it includes 100,000 dollars for grant programs. We also have included in there the funds that we would typically pay to the community center for leasing rental space there. The, we included 20,000 dollars for financial advisory services. We have used Davenport. And we included that in this fiscal year, and we expect that we may have to have them assist us with some financial services for 2025. And then also, we are allocating 25,000 for a facilities master plan. I know that has been a topic of discussion as we move into our lease space. We do need to come up with a plan of, of a permanent city hall. And again, you know, we need to have some funds available for some assistance to plan for how we are going to address a permanent city hall facility. So that averages, totals rather, to 283,000. Next slide. Next slide. So the next steps, again, this is the proposed budget for 2025. The expectation is that council will review the details, provide feedback, suggest any changes. We have had some great dialogue, the two meetings that we had with you guys, and look forward to any other feedback. This is our first budget public hearing today. The, the second required public hearing will be on Thursday, November the seventh, and then we are hoping for adoption of the budget on November the seventh as well. Next slide. And we want to thank you so much for the opportunity to present a balanced budget focused on moving our city forward together in fiscal year 2025. And I want to thank Lolita, she's been with us about a month now, and jumped right in and got into the budget process, and she's an experienced city finance director, so it does help that she comes in with that experience, so we thank her. And then we also want to thank Keisha Dixon, Ms. Keisha Dixon in my office, for her assistance in helping us to put the budget document together. So with that said, Mayor, we do have the fee schedule that we wanted to go over, so I don't know if you want to take questions now, or you want to do the, let us do the fee schedule as well.
Counsel, would you prefer to just go and have everything, or do you want to break and have a conversation, or ask questions now?
You can wait till after we do.
Okay, so let's do the fees, and then that way we can, you're done.
I'll start with that, this is a document, we've went over the fee schedule and met with each of you, so I won't spend a lot of time going line by line. What I will say is that the city has, operating costs have increased over the last several years, and many of the fees that the city is charged, are charging, they have not increased those fees anywhere between five and ten years. So staff was asked to take a look at the fees, evaluate them, check around, look at, see what our sister cities are charging, and make sure that our fees would be comparable to theirs, and then make recommendations. So in doing so, you have what we developed as a citywide fee schedule. I will hit the highlights on how to read this document, in case the public have any questions, or you guys have any questions on how this is set up. So you have this document to set up to have each one of the departments. So we start off with the city clerks department. They were asked to compare twenty twenty-four, the fees that we're charging for twenty twenty-four versus the fees that we're charging for twenty twenty-five, and to give a justification. So for instance, we're gonna take the city clerk's office, you'll see alcohol fees. You get the title of what those fees are, you see what you're charged for twenty twenty-four, what they are for twenty twenty-five, and then the justification. And that's the way each department is set up, and you will go and look, anything in green is a department set, is a department call center, a fee center, actually, I'm sorry. Anything in blue deals with a specific category. Now, I'm gonna just hit the highlights on some of these fees. Courts, you may want to look at courts, courts, we have never printed, to my understanding, we have not printed the court fees, they are here, and they are statutory in nature. The state of Georgia determined what those fees are. Okay, we have some fees that we're charging, and I'm gonna jump around on pages. So courts fees is from page two to page fifteen, sixteen, I'm sorry.
All the yellow pages, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just so everyone knows, everything with a yellow highlight, that's the court.
And they are, again, statutory in nature. When you're looking at parks and recs, this division, we had, they're proposing to increase some of the fees for the pool, one of the questions that came up was, do we have a annual pass for family and individual? So that has, that's listed there as well, so if someone wants to come and they don't want to pay the fees individually every time they come, they could purchase a pass, so that's included to make it easier for our residents.
And that's on page sixteen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The sports programs, we did not have several, we did not have sports programs for twenty twenty-four, so the proposed fees, that's on page seventeen, those fees are included. Also, what's new with this fee schedule is the women's club has been transferred over and moved rather to the parks and recs, so they will be managing that facility. Planning and zoning will begin on page eighteen, and all of the fees that we charge for planning and zoning is listed, and that goes from seven, from eighteen, all the way over through... all the way through twenty-five. Okay, and then police, fees are listed on page twenty-six, public works is on twenty-seven. Now, these fees will not take effect until January twenty twenty-five. Staff is planning to, matter of fact, this should be, is at the library already. We are also going to post on the website, we will be sending information out to the businesses so that they will be aware of the new fees before it happens. If you guys adopt in November, then we're going to get started putting the information out so that they will be aware. We're going to have, if there's any questions, anything of that nature, we'll be available to answer those questions as well. So we know it's, it's maybe a little short notice, but we have to get it done. The other part of this is that some of these fees must be approved by a resolution and/or an ordinance, so the ordinance will come before you in December. Okay?
Okay.
Any other questions?
So are you ready for questions now? Councilman Carroll?
To go back to the budget document, if you look at the revenues.
Which page?
My spread, my PowerPoint doesn't have page numbers, but it's on the funds.
It's on page, funds eleven?
Eleven, yeah.
Okay.
So in twenty twenty-four, the projected property tax revenue was six million, forty-two thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars, and for twenty twenty-five, it's projected six million, six hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. So is that projecting over a ten percent growth in the tax digest?
We're looking at a three percent growth in the tax digest. So you have other fees that's included in there, so I, and I have a breakdown, I started analyzing that, in fact, I got this information right before we came here. There is a... So your property taxes for residential represent thirty-one point twelve percent of the tax digest. Your commercial companies represent fifty-six point eight nine percent of your tax digest. Industrial represents ten point five seven, so businesses represent a combined total of sixty-seven point four percent. So when that goes up, it, it has an impact. You also have motor vehicle, you have utilities, so it's not a ten percent straight across the board. We did not, we did not propose any military rate, just the values.
Understand that, but, but unless I'm doing my math wrong, if it's six million, forty-two thousand, nine hundred ninety for the last year, and then it's six hundred fifty-two thousand more, I mean, that is more than ten percent increase, it may not all be on residential, it may be split, you know, somewhere between commercial and...
Yes, sir, that's absolutely correct. It's not on residential, just businesses, and it's a combination of the two.
Right, right, so when I'm asking about the tax, I'm asking just about the residential tax digest, but I'm saying this does include a projection that the overall tax digest, which includes residential, commercial, industrial, will grow by about ten percent?
Estimated, yes, sir.
Is, is that what it's done in the past?
It's went up even more than that, and then, you know, in twenty eighteen, it took the, I mean, two thousand eight, it took the nosedive, and it's been gradually going back up, and I think the last three years, it went up, in some cases even more than that, ten percent, it may have went up as more as fifteen percent in some, some counties.
But also to his point, are we taking account for commercial when they request a, a change in the value of their property? Because that's been an issue for us over the last couple of years, where some, they'll get their tax di, they'll get their tax digest, and then they'll ask for an appeal for, for it, so do we kind of make sure, as we're looking at the budget, we have that covered from a commercial perspective?
Well, we basically just did across the board change, because what typically happens is when they do their freeze, some of them, they've had, it's three years ago, so it's time for those property values to readjust and come back to marketplace, so I think it's going to balance out, so I did not do a line by line, a specific adjustment for those challenges to the...
Okay, and then the other pieces, the SPOSS, just making sure it's for six years, not five years?
Yes, ma'am, it's a six-year SPOSS, but I just took into consideration going into twenty-five, you have five more years to go.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay. Any other questions? Councilman Perkins, and then?
This is to follow up on Councilwoman Carroll's questions. Is your microphone on?
It's, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, is that better? Okay.
Okay. I think it would be very helpful for us to see the percentage increase that is being estimated on these numbers between twenty twenty-four adopted and proposed twenty twenty-five, and perhaps breaking that out further between just property tax, to say, residential and all other, or something like that. And then a footnote about how that number was chosen, if, if... I misunderstood you perhaps when you said that the, that you were expecting, predicting a three percent growth in the overall digest?
Yes, the value of the digest, yes, ma'am.
Okay, but as Councilmember Carroll noted, this looks like a ten percent increase. So I think it would inform us about how much there is the projection of increases in the digest, as well as the revenue that it would generate by type, because of course, we need to feel comfortable that that projection is based on the historic increases, or anything that might be coming up in twenty twenty-five, et cetera. We did have a situation a couple of years ago where the, and I think it was attributable to the apartments, where the revenue from apartment property taxes plummeted. And so, looking at a trend that would show us how these projections were, came about, would be very helpful, so that we could understand what's the basis of this.
Okay.
And, you know, certainly we need to make sure that we're, we understand that and have real faith that that's going to happen, and... So I think that's all I have to say on, on that.
Okay.
I do have another question, but Mr. Perkins has questions.
Yes, Councilman Perkins, thank you.
So I think this is in line with the mayor and Councilmember Hood's question, because I may be misremembering, I believe the, I believe the HB five eighty-one, that we have the referendum going on right now, actually has a component of it that affects appraisals, or sort of like the appeal process, if I'm not mistaken, I believe it actually does away with it, which I don't know if that would affect this year's budget, or put it at effect twenty twenty-six.
And I speak the little bit that I know about it, and I think we're going to bring someone here to talk about it, but what I understand is that there is a proposal to freeze the rates. Okay, and then it looks at what the cost of living, what the gross national product index is, they have an index, a way of measuring to see just how much more it could go up, and it cannot exceed that amount, but your baseline is going to be the property values this year. So it's important to know what you're, and it's going to impact your residential, it's not going to impact your businesses.
Do you know if it does away? I know it felt like the, the training that we found ourselves together at, they sounded like people were still scratching their heads a little bit on the impact of it, there were some unknowns. Do you know if businesses will be able to opt out or appeal valuations, or is that...
I don't think it's, I'm not sure if it's going to have an effect, but they didn't mention, they said this is only going to apply, the trainer that we, I went to said it would only apply to residential, residential homes, it's not the businesses.
Yep.
I think the same procedures that they have right now will remain in place.
Gotcha, okay.
And I think to your point, Councilman Perkins, as a city, we also have the option to opt out of it as well, and so the mayors have been talking about that.
Yes.
And so we need to talk about it once the election.
Next meeting, yeah, because there's a very small window to do so, so.
Yes, okay. Any other questions?
I have a couple. There's no page number on this, but it, it's in relation to the funding for the class and compensation study, and I didn't quite follow the conversation, but it, it says eight thousand dollars, and then I heard something about twenty thousand dollars. Can, can, maybe Tammy, you can go over that.
Dr. Baker's on his way to answering.
Thank you, Dr. Baker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, yes, the, the proposed amount for the compensation classification study is twenty-one thousand. We plan to pay eight thousand of that for this fiscal year, and the remaining balance we'd pay in twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so the total is twenty-one thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
And eight thousand will come out of the twenty twenty-four budget?
Yes, twenty twenty, eight thousand will be paid out of the twenty twenty-four budget, that's correct.
Okay, and then?
Twenty twenty-five budget, I'm sorry. City manager's nodding twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so eight thousand will come out of the twenty twenty-five budget, and then where does the remainder come?
We're paying out of this twenty twenty-four budget.
Okay. All right, my next question has to do with the increase in fees, and this was something that I mentioned when I met with one-on-one to go over the budget. I don't know if any changes have been made. One thing that might be helpful, and it's probably a big ask, is if the spreadsheet of fees, if the fee has changed, would it be possible to have that show in red, so that we can quickly see what changes there are in, in fees? So I'll just throw that out there, if it's an impossible ask. But one thing that I was concerned about was the recreational fees, because of the nature of our population, many of people don't have disposable income, and so when we set fees, I think we should keep that in mind. And I will also say that recreation programs, in my opinion, don't need to pay for themselves. They can be subsidized. There are other things that do need to pay for themselves, but I think recreation is so critical to the quality of life, to public safety, to many other things, that unlike some other things, maybe police fines, whatever, that need to look at funding police up to a point, but that recreation doesn't necessarily have to be a break-even thing. So when the fees are set, I hope that that will be considered.
And I can say that in meeting with staff, they did look at that, they looked at what they can offset, how much they could, they looked at not only offset, but what was being charged by our sister cities, they looked at the operational costs, because for instance, the pool, we have to pay someone to manage and clean the pool, so that causes their uniforms, you know, they have to be paid for, so we do, he did look at that and try to make sure that... So we do, he did look at that and try to make sure to keep the fees as low as possible.
Okay. Again, without trying to break even on the cost of having a swimming pool and staff, et cetera?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's, thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that.
To Councilwoman Hood's point, there's opportunity for grants to cover that. So I know Mr. Duncan is looking at that as we speak, but it's always important to have the amounts in there, just to cover from a budget perspective, right? So the only other question I have was related to the strategic plan. Within that strategic plan, are we going to have a housing component to it for the overall strategic plan, or is it just a straight strategic plan, or will there be a housing component to it?
At this point, Mayor, I was thinking it would just be a straight strategic plan. However, as we begin to craft our RFP, we can add that and, and see if we get some responses to doing a straight strategic plan and including the housing, and then we'll definitely take that under consideration, because I think it's important for our community.
Okay, thank you. With that, Council, I know Vice Mayor Johnson, you're on the line, did you have anything? So with that being said, I will close both A and B out. Thank you to the staff and all of your participation, and to the council for your input. But now we'll move into 3C, which is the public hearing.
Can you please hear me?
Hello?
I can't, I can't hear you. But if you can hear me, I have nothing to add. I have nothing to say, ma'am, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to...
I'm comfortable with it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we will allow public comments and open it up for the actual public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2025 operating and enterprise budget. So we will allow three minutes. If you have any comments that you would like to make to this budget, did we have anyone signed up?
Victor Johnson signed up.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, and then, you're okay? And then I see former Councilman Moore. Do we have anyone else signed up? Okay, former Councilman Moore.
Thank you, yeah, Councilman Dean Moore, former Councilman Dean Moore, Rayford Trail, and I appreciate this budget. I think it's, it's, it looks pretty solid. I see a new office space of $575,000. It makes me feel better as a former council member, and having been through the budget to buy the city hall annex and the money we spent there, this is what, one month of fees, I guess, that is comparable to what we spent on the, the city hall annex, but we own that, whereas this is just going into rent in somebody else's pocket. But thankful to have that option. I would have liked the new office to be facing Church Street in that line, that's what I had mentioned several years ago, but, well, anyway. The... City annexation study, $20,000, I'm glad to see that you're doing a study. I remember a few years ago that we were presented with a proposal to annex all the way to North DeKalb Mall, to increase our attendance at meetings, I guess, and at least this time we're doing a study. And I really appreciate the $50,000 proposed for the Forty Oaks. Well, I'm not going to say the exact funding of it, but it is there. And then going into the future, I see some other budget items for Forty Oaks Park Nature Reserve, and so I'm thankful for that, so congratulations, I like it.
Thank you, anyone else? Anyone else? And I will say this three times, anyone else, anyone else, anyone else. Hearing no one else, we will now close the public hearing. With that being said, we, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
That we adjourn the public hearing?
I'll take a second.
A second?
Okay, I'll give it to Councilman Perkins, he was a little faster than you on that one. With that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, and yes, thank you. Meeting is adjourned, thank you all, we'll start back up at seven o'clock.